And if the clerk will please take the roll call.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Danuski.
Excused.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
All right, if you will, please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and if there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. There's a timer on the screen behind me, and clerk, please call the first person.
Nobody signed up, mayor?
Anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to talk during public comments? Hearing or seeing nobody coming forward, then citizen comments to close. Next item on the agenda is a presentation, an introduction of Rebecca Range, a communications specialist. Ms. Salzley, our assistant manager.
Mayor and council, I am very pleased to introduce to you a new staff member. It's only appropriate that we really...
(laughing).
Rebecca. A position that when Leslie Harris left and she was community... It's always a good opportunity to kind of... How the position... So, the position that Becky has assumed, they've really got focus on communications. Very event coordinator. Becky is very, very well qualified for... She has come on board. Most recently, she was with the city of Redmond and... For that, certainly, when I see... Working in advertising and marketing operations and one other thing. Spent some time in Nellis, Texas. Director of... Kind of... But he was very, very impressed with... Always looking for opportunities for... So, a city and have... I told her her family can see her.
First of all, thank you so much. I am so... So excited to help you share your story. Probably even more importantly than that, I'm hoping to help city staff find really creative... Talk a lot about communications and what we're... What we're saying to the community. Was way more important. How can I help residents and... Those who are residents have all the ways to tell us in a way that we can really hear it. Thank you so much. I'm excited to be a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll add our welcome to the family, so we're glad to have you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by our King County assessor, Mr. John Wilson.
Just when you thought you were safe.
(laughing).
So, if you can get it full screen and then... Yep. Well, thank you all for having me out. I'm gonna bear with you a bit today, the world of real estate that we find ourselves in, one that many of you know very well from the way this community has grown and that. But, you know, what we find is that Seattle has a lot in common with San Francisco and Vancouver. They're both port cities oriented toward Asia, very robust economies. Both of them have, like us, though, profound affordability problems. San Francisco's at a point where almost it's a city of just the very rich and the very poor. Vancouver is perilously close. Give you a quick example of here, let's look at what the average median cost in San Francisco, 1.5 million. In Vancouver, that's adjusted into U.S. currency, 1.2 million for a home in Vancouver. And in Seattle this year, the median price went up to $777,000. In King County, over the last year between '16 and '17, the average home in King County went up $100,000 in assessed value. So, quickly, what our job, as many of you know, is we set values on some 700,000 residential and commercial properties here in Kenmore and all around King County. And what we're looking for when we do that is to try to figure out how big is that property, whether it's a residence or a commercial. In the residential sector, we're interested largely in what's your kitchen line? What's the bathroom line? Because those are the drivers of value. People sometimes think that, well, I've got four bedrooms versus three bedrooms. That's nice, but that's not going to have a significant meaning to your value. But those are the things that kind of drive it. And yes, I'm going to tell you something, I know you're all going to be shocked by property taxes over the past five years have gone up about 30 percent. We'll have more on that in just a second. But let's quickly look at why that's the case. As many of you know, and as the three legislators who were here just a moment ago knew, the state Supreme Court through the McLeary decision determined O'Leary was not adequately funding public education as a paramount duty. So, it said that had to be changed. Then in addition, we have the 1 percent property tax cap that has driven many local governments to fund basic services such as parks, human services, and other things through levies. And I'll show you an example of it sort of run to extreme. We also have a case where we've approved a couple regional big-ticket items in sound transit and the Puget Sound Emergency Radio System. And then finally, the reality is, is that while the real estate market took a nose-dive in the late 2008 period, it is fully rebounded, including here in Kenmore. Prices throughout King County now are above what the high point previously was. Now, when we talk about surging values, part of what we've got to look at is also what's happened as far as voter approval methods. And I'm going to show you your neighbor to the south, Seattle, and what the typical tax bill looks for them. This is 2017, but you can see you have schools, you also have a low-income housing levy, a family and education levy, a pre-K levy, a transportation levy, a campaign finance levy, which is supposed to be democracy vouchers, which I'm still not sure what those are, libraries, and parks. But you can see in a number of cases, those are things that traditionally municipalities have as part of their general fund, and that doesn't include countywide measures or regional items like sound transit. So, what the legislature did in order to meet the McLeary challenge was they instituted what was called a levy swap. The notion was is that there are some parts of King County, some parts of the state, that rely very much on locally-approved levies to augment education, but that that was creating inequity across the state with other less wealthy school districts. So, they wanted to equalize it. So, this year, they came to us after they passed it, and for us, we added a levy that's a dollar-one per a thousand of assessed value. Now, meanwhile, voter-approved levies will not begin to go down until 2019, and in King County, of the 20 school districts we have in the county, 18 of them had education ballot measures on the ballot in February. Now, some of them were replacement levies, but some of them would be new money. Beginning in 2019, the legislature hoped that they would cap the education funding at either a dollar fifty per thousand or 2,500 per student, whichever was less. And they've told us that property tax rates are to drop from the 2018 level. I caution all of you, as I have cautioned them, and as I've cautioned others around the county, what you wish is not necessarily what will actually happen. Because in part, while rates may drop, for the first time, we've changed fundamentally how we fund education. And let's take a look at that. You know, normally, the way the tax process goes is as values go up in a community, your overall rates go down. So, that's how you end up with what we call a budget-balanced or a budget-based property tax system. McLeary changed all that, and what it did was it said, we're going to set a value, then if it goes up, the amount of money is going to go up for schools because it's going to be charged against a specific millage rate for $1,000 of assessed value. And that's going to mean higher taxes if the values go up. That presumes in part the property value throughout King County will continue to go up. Now, right now, there are every indication that that will indeed be the case again in 2018, but we don't fully know the ramifications yet of some other things on the horizon. The other fact is, is that if there are significant property tax appeals, that could lower the revenue that people will get. So, I want to take you through quickly a few jurisdictions to give you an idea of what's happened. And we'll start with Seattle simply because it's closest to the county average. On a median house of $597,000, taxes went up in the city of Seattle 16.9 percent, which is what the county-wide average was. That's about $825. Now, here in Kenmore, on an average median value of $500,000 was 11.35 percent, or about $596. If you go across the lake to Bellevue, you'll see the average value, the median value is 791, but the percentage was 21.4 percent, or just over $1,200, almost $1,300. In Kirkland, $574,000 for that home, 16.26 percent, a 795 percent increase. Redmond was $700,000, or a 19, almost 19.6 percent increase and about $1,100. Now, do any of you have relatives or friends incarnation? If you do, you may want to send them a sympathy card. Because for the average home incarnation at $379,000, this is the increase they saw, 31.47 percent. On that $379,000 home, their taxes went up more than $1,000. Over the past six years then, when you factor in this year, property taxes across the county have gone up anywhere from 50 to 66 percent, dependent upon the jurisdiction. That, I would submit, is not sustainable, and we're going to have to figure out something to do. Now, one of the things I urge, and we've had discussions with the city and you've been a great partner, I'd urge you to continue with working with us of getting people in the senior exemption program. And quickly, you know, you have to be the owner, occupant of the home, 61 years and older, household income of $40,000 or less, and David and I will wrestle over the definition of what is taxable income, but you're absolutely right, mayor, and it's something we need to fix, but we need to fix essentially the whole senior exemption program. But meanwhile, you can call this number. But it's a challenge that we're not reaching as many people as we need to. We worked with AARP a lot this past legislative session to try to modify the senior exemption program, to expand it. One of the things that amazed me and it's so telling of the real estate market we have is we explained to them that we had parts of our community where people qualified for the low-income senior exemption, but their home value was actually in excess of $1 million. Now, that's not impossible in this community or many other communities in King County, but to them, it was unbelievable, the national office, the local people understood it. But the national office couldn't conceive that you were at a real estate market that was that robust that people... But we all know, you have neighbors perhaps who bought their home in the '70s or the early '80s. They maybe bought it for $60,000, $70,000. And today, it's not surprising, especially if it has a view of the lake and a view of the mountain, that it's worth like $1.2 million or so. So, we've got that phenomenon. I want to take you quickly though through where money comes from and goes to. As you know, King County has 139 governments, 39 cities. Washington State has 2,000 governments, 281 cities, 39 counties, and 1,700 special districts. You can see as far as income flow, the state of Washington relies heavily upon the sales tax, much less so on property tax, but also significantly upon the business and occupation tax, juxtaposed to King County that relies much more heavily on the sales tax and much less on the sales tax and does not have any significant business tax income. So, we find ourselves in a structural deficit. At the same time, if you look at state and local taxes per thousand of personal income, what you will see is that in Washington State, that tax burden has actually been steadily dropping. Now, that's not for everyone admittedly, and part of it is driven by the very technology boom that we've had in the community, that those people have helped bend that arc downward in that, and not everybody works in technology. But we've got other problems beyond rising taxes. Low-income seniors historically have not been exempt from special levies, although working with Executive Constantine, we now have law that allows us, in certain cases, to waive levy-lid lifts. We will be doing that with language that was already in the veterans and senior levy that was passed countywide last year to provide some relief to people there. Using special levies to pay for basic services is risky. Many of my friends around the community will tell me sometimes, John, calm down, don't get so rattled, I mean, voters won't say no. The reality is voters have said no. Back in 1997, I was chief of staff to Executive Sims. He'd just elected his first full term in office. We were all quite excited that evening until we looked at the Medic One number. The countywide Medic One levy failed. It failed significantly. We had to go back and literally put it back on the ballot in order of February to keep the ambulances rolling. And this is something that's very personal to me in that my brother-in-law, who lived in Kirkland at the time, about three years ago, was walking to the bank one day when he fell from a massive heart attack. Thank God a bicyclist came upon him, started CPR, threw his cellphone to a passerby who called Kirkland Fire. They hit him seven times with the paddles and literally brought him back to life from death. But they were able to do that because we have a world-class first responder system here, one that's in jeopardy if we don't step up and continue to fund these kind of things. The 1 percent cap is also forcing small counties and King County to make service cuts that aren't always necessarily prudent. I was talking to the sheriff of Ponderay County, he says, I can't keep deputies anymore. I try my best to recruit young men and women that come out of our military services, they stay for about a year, and then they go to Spokane or someplace else because it's better pay, better hours, and I'm stuck with the fact that I don't have 24/7 coverage anymore. As you probably heard, King County Prosecutor Dan Snatterberg announced recently that indeed the county was going to stop prosecuting certain low-level felonies on burglaries, car crimes, and that because it was too expensive to prosecute those. So, it's having a very real impact on how we operate, but also on public safety. Finally, rising property taxes just add to our housing affordability problem. I hear all too often from people around our community who sadly ask the question whether they can stay in their home much longer, and they worry whether the day is coming, coming all too fast, where they're going to have to sell that house and move elsewhere. And finally, we don't know exactly what the impacts of the Trump cuts, tax cuts, could be. We know a couple of things. We'll run through a couple of those really quick. We know, for example, that mortgage loans will now be capped at $750,000. That won't affect a lot of people in Kenmore, but it could conceivably affect some because of some of the waterfront and view properties that you have. We also know, though, that we're going to have a state and local tax cap, and that's going to include property taxes, your car tabs, and that. And given what we've done with property taxes this year, frankly, it's going to affect a number of people in your community who are going to find, especially if they buy a new car, and my wife, for some reason, thought the 1998 Volvo finally needed to be replaced. I don't get it myself, but, you know, when I ran the numbers, I went, man, we're over that $10,000 mark, you know? And I didn't even get the Lamborghini. So, you recognize that's not a very high threshold. Then, you know, what you're finding is the way the tax law has now been adjusted, homeownership becomes less attractive for first-time homebuyers, especially when you combine it with the property tax factor. And as we talked about just a second ago, if you're an older homeowner, you may be pushed to downside, but the challenge is can you stay in the community that you've been living in? Or are you stuck in a situation where, yes, you're equity-rich, but you can't afford to transfer that equity to another house and live, so you have to move outside the county and that? And then, you know, we don't know what will that impact of overall federal tax policy have on housing costs or housing values? Will it start to soften the market and that as people start to ask, what are we doing? We've seen, you know, I think, all too clearly now, that our tax system and our service delivery system is broken. Nobody really designed it. It has happened over years, over decades. But now, we're at a point where simply we need to fix it. And so, I would like you to join us over these next few months. Dow and I are going to launch a statewide conversation on how to modernize our tax system. It's simply overdue. It needs to be fairer, it needs to be more transparent, it needs to work better to cover. You know, to give you another example and point, we fund, back to 911, we fund 911 with a historic revenue combination of taxes on landlines and cellphones. My wife and I have four kids. One of them has a landline, the other three, I'm not even sure know what it is, but they're certainly not going to be getting one anytime soon because my youngest can't figure out how to send a text message over it. But the fact is, is that revenue isn't coming back. Yet, as my story about my brother-in-law illustrates, and it's a story that is told over and over again every week, there are members of our community that depend on 911 to stay alive. We've got to find a better way to fund that. Our challenge also is that we have a gas tax that isn't adequate to fund the infrastructure and transportation that we need. We have in part because we have mass transit, more efficient cars, we have folks that have switched to cars that don't even use fossil fuels anymore. And as our road miles have gone up, our revenue has not kept pace. So, it's come time for us to finally figure out, how do we modernize that system and create truly a 21st century funding mechanism for 21st century government? And on that note, I will thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You open for questions if there are any?
Sure, absolutely.
Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for your presentation. I have a question, and you touched on it, on the senior housing exemption. Can you, or the tax exemption, can you tell me, has that process been streamlined or changed all in the last couple of years? And the reason I ask is because I worked with somebody a couple of years ago to try to, and it was very much like the example you relayed, and it was a quite nice place, but this individual could barely afford to even keep the heat at 68. And the documents that continually would be asked for, and it wasn't asked for upfront, it would be then four months later, they would ask for more documents and this and that, and I found it to be a very, very difficult... It was frustrating for me, but it was really frustrating for, you know, an 86-year-old person that I'm working with to try to help them.
Unfortunately, Councilmember Smith, it has not improved significantly, although we're trying to take a stab at it. A couple of things that we're doing. One is, the legislature almost passed indexing to the $40,000 threshold, which we find frankly in King County is probably too low. It would have raised it to roughly $56,000. That would help, but as Mayor Baker and I have talked about a couple of times, the paperwork requirement frankly is ridiculous, and it's something of a moving target. There are cases where we would like to be able to get people into the program, but the state statute is such... I'll give you an example of the folly of it. The senior exemption also applies to disabled veterans. To qualify as a disabled vet, you have to be rated by the VA as 100 percent disabled. Now, we've been lucky enough, we have a couple of former vets that are interns in our office, and I asked one of them, what would it take to be 100 percent disabled? And he said, not to get gruesome, but you'd have to lose probably both legs, one arm, and be blind and at least one eye. You're incapable of working. Is that any way for us to treat men and women that have served and given their best for this country? I think definitely not. What we'd like to do is a couple of things. One is, we'd like to see whether we couldn't somehow streamline that paperwork. One of the things we're working on right now is an online mobile application that would make it much easier for people to gather up their paper, to send it in. They could literally just take a snapshot of it and send it in through a secured methodology. We're waiting to get the green light from the Budget Office to go ahead with that. We'd like to get that online a little bit later this year. Next year, with the legislature, we'd both like to see an indexing system brought in. That would help. But we'd also like to look at a larger system of perhaps a homestead exemption for property taxpayers, for residential payers in general, a special perhaps added level for seniors that would be much easier to administer, where basically, tell us your age, tell us where you live, that's it, and we'd give you a certain percentage off. And those are all things that are very readily available to cross-check against already-existing databases and that. So, there are things that we can do. Long and short, I hear you loud and clear, we're working to try to simplify it. We're also, our staff has worked overtime to try, but we still have a backlog, and they get a little shudder when I go out to events like this and talk and say, please come in and apply. But also, let me assure you that when you get people in, if it turns out that they would have qualified a year or two earlier, we'll go back and bring them up to date and that, so we have some retro that we can implement.
Well, I appreciate that, and I see that as a really basic and critical component with, especially in the Puget Sound region where it's obviously the taxes, and you showed it right there, and we can anticipate how the problem will only get worse for a lot of these individuals on fixed incomes. And so, I would just offer, if there's anything I can do to help, I would gladly help you in that because I think it really is an important part, and if there's something that can be done at the state level, that would be really nice to know.
I'll take you up on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
With values changing so fast, how do you keep up?
We run a lot. You know, it is a challenge these days. Under state law, we're to physically inspect a property once every six years. I've raised the question with the staff of frankly, is that frequent enough? Now, part of what we do, we use a computerized mass appraisal system. So, we're ingesting sales data all the time from real estate sales across the county. We do batch them down into neighborhoods. We have the county itself down to... We have the county itself down to, I think it's 85 or 86 inspection areas. So we're comparing Kenmore to Kenmore, not Kenmore to Medina or to White Center and that, because we feel you've got to do like to like. It's tough, though. I mean, one of the challenges, frankly, we have these days in terms of just getting out and about, doing physical inspections, is our travel times throughout King County have easily increased by 50 to maybe 70%. Our residential team is hubbed out of a facility down in Renton at Black River. To get up here, it used to take maybe a half hour, 45 minutes. It now can easily take an hour or more. And we have to backtime that into when they get out of the office and when they get out of the field and that. So it's a challenge, but we're running as fast as we can.
You got it, Councilmember. Anybody else? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate you taking your time out. And I appreciate you coming to talk with the mayors, too, and so, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any discussion? All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Seattle, SMS Limited Partnership and Verizon Wireless Franchise
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I have some representatives for Verizon here tonight to talk about the overview of projects proposed in Kenmore under the new franchise agreement. I've got Leela Vaga and Kim Allen here tonight to present to you.
Hello, thank you for having us. Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Leela Vaga. I'm a network engineer with Verizon.
And I'm Kim Allen. I'm with the Wireless Policy Group, representing Verizon Wireless in their small cell effort in the Pacific Northwest.
So we're going to go through a quick presentation. It's an overview of what small cell facilities are and why they're needed, just as some background to our franchise agreement that's on the agenda tonight. I'd like to thank the council for adopting a code that permits small cells back a while back, and also for taking up this franchise agreement. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them after our presentation. We're really happy to go through it with you.
Yeah, and the franchise agreement is the last step in the important work this council did in adopting a code that's workable and efficient to deploy this investment in the city of Kenmore.
So first, I'd like to just speak briefly to what a small cell is. So a macro site is a traditional wireless facility. So there are a few around City Hall, there are a few around the neighborhood. What you generally see is a site that's between 80 and 120 feet tall with anywhere from 3 to 12 antennas on it that are roughly about 8 feet tall each. What small cells allow us to do is put in smaller antennas and radios right up near macro sites, you know, so that we can add additional capacity to our network without creating interference with our macro sites. So each small cell fits on utility poles or light standards or other existing utility infrastructure, for the most part, and then, and its target height range for the equipment's between 20 and 40 feet. Each node, which is a single small cell installation, has a range of about 400 to 1,000 feet in that ballpark, roughly. And they work together, they don't work together on the backend, they're standalone facilities, but they are coordinated so that the signals pick up where the next one leaves off. So that, in that way, they work as a network for providing some infrastructure. So why do we need small cells? The wireless data use in our community right now is just exploding, and that's happening throughout the entire country. So a few statistics to illustrate that. In 2016, mobile data traffic was 35 times the volume it was in 2010. More people are doing more with their devices in more places. And, you know, as was alluded to earlier, a lot of people are going wireless-only. 52% of American households are now wireless-only, and of those who have landlines, most have them for emergency purposes and don't use them as their primary phone anymore. The average American household has 13 connected devices. So that might be your work phone and your personal phone and your tablet and your kid's phone, but it might also be your smart doorbell or your smart refrigerator or your insulin pump or your heart monitor. More and more things are being connected to the internet that never were before. And that's all contributing to this, this just rampant growth in need for wireless data capacity. A few more statistics. As you might expect, younger people are more early adopters of smartphones, so 92% of millennials have smartphones. And at this point, 76% of 911 calls originate from cellphones. In addition to that, I'd point out that first responders are the mobile workforce. They use mobile data technology in their daily jobs, you know, more than those of us in the tech industry do. It's a key to having first responders be well-prepared and be able to keep up with the necessary information on the go. And then that last step there is about machine-to-machine traffic. So machine-to-machine traffic is anytime it's not a person on a device, but rather a device sending information to another device. So that might be your smart doorbell, but it also might be your city lights or your streetlights. And machine-to-machine connections are projected to increase from 36 million in 2013 to 263 million in 2018. So we're just looking at a changing landscape in mobile data use, largely because of just the way that technology is evolving and the way that our society is evolving with it. So now I'll talk a little bit. Oop, there we go. Okay. What insufficient capacity means for people who are trying to use their devices. It means you have slow internet speeds, you have higher buffering times, you have disruptions in your video calls, dropped calls, and connection problems. So capacity problems make it so that it's harder to do the things you do with your phone, whether that's telecommute, whether that's communicate with your kids, whatever it is. It makes it so that your phone looks like it has full signal, but in fact, is having service issues. Small cells are also really great for targeted coverage gaps. So most of us are familiar with that scenario of there's that one road you drive down where you've got good coverage, except in that one spot where you dip into a valley or go behind a hill and you lose your coverage. Small cells are a wonderful solution for that kind of situation because they can provide targeted coverage and capacity in that one small area without producing a signal strong enough to interfere with the surrounding macro sites.
Kenmore has some of the most challenging terrain actually around because you have the tall tree cover, you have the hills, and you also have water, which does very bizarre things to a wireless signal. So managing all three of those components in a way that provides continuous coverage and capacity is challenging, and small cells are really designed to help with those challenges.
Yeah, so with water, imagine shining a flashlight at water, at the surface of a lake. That's kind of what the radio signal does when it hits the lake. It goes in all directions and changes depending on where the waveforms are in the surface of the water at that moment. Okay, so the rest of this presentation is photo simulations of Verizon's proposed first project in Kenmore. We've named it Whiskers. Our RF engineers get to pick the names, and I don't know why, but they like this one.
They come up with some doozies.
This is one of my favorite ones this year. So we've got eight nodes, and I'm going to go through them fairly quickly, but I, we can certainly flip back to any you'd like to look at. These are co-locations on PSC wood utility poles. So this is the first one, and it's a little hard to see on there. We do paint the equipment to match, intentionally to try to make it blend in. I'll kind of move forward to get to some pictures where you can see the equipment a bit more clearly. So you see, generally, we've got a radio enclosure box and then antenna boxes above. There you can see the antennas against the blue sky in this one a little bit better. And then, I think in your printed version, they probably are a little more clear also. So we're proposing two-foot panel antennas at the top of the pole, then cabling running through a conduit that stands off the pole that's required so that the pole remains climbable. It's a Puget Sound Energy Standard, but also a National Electric Safety Code standard. And then that goes down to an equipment box enclosure. So that's a good one of the equipment box enclosure, that sits lower on the pole and below the communication space. And so that houses the radio components. So each of these would have a fiber connection and then power fed from the pole, and no ground equipment, no associated equipment except for what you see on the pole. And you can see it's a combination of distribution poles and transmission poles, all PSC wood poles. And that's fairly typical of what Verizon's installing throughout the region right now for our 4G LTE small cell deployments. Could move through the rest of these real quick? That's a good one, just in terms of showing you the components on the pole clearly. And these are photo simulations, but if you'd like to check out some pictures of what these things actually, or some real-life examples of what these things look like, we've got several deployed in North Green Lake in Seattle and also in the Fremont neighborhood of Seattle. So I'd encourage you to go take a look at those. We've also got three new nodes right down at the Ballard Sunday Market, right along Ballard Avenue in Seattle. So, and we've got 15 nodes now deployed in North Bellevue. So if you'd like to go take a look at those, I'd be happy to get you details on where they are if you want to see what these look like in real life. And then that takes you through all of them. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Marshall.
And it might be called the Whiskers Project because all the, those installments go up 61st, which I take it used to be called Cat's Whiskers Road, maybe. I don't know. But why, why are they all up 61st?
Our radio frequency engineers identify the places where we need more capacity. And this was the first project in Kenmore that they identified as an area needing more capacity to the network. So that particular area is a place where our users are putting more demand on our network than our current network is designed to support. So the placement of these facilities is really driven by data. So we get data from our antennas at our existing sites in real time, in terms of how much data traffic they're processing, whether they're able to process that at top speed, whether they're slowing down, whether we have dropped calls or missed data. We also have a team of drive testers and other system performance engineers who are going out and doing readings of how our service is throughout our sites. And then third-party organizations like Root Metrics measure performance. So our radio frequency engineers take all of that data and they put it into models with, looking at both current need and future projected need and projected use, and determine where they expect that we are going to need additional capacity. And right now, it's more often than not where we need additional capacity today, and we're expecting to need even more additional capacity in future. And I don't know the specifics around what's driving the need there, but my hunch is that it probably has to do with high traffic flow and the current placement of our macro sites. One thing that we can do with our small cells is you put small cell network in, add capacity, and then you can focus the capacity of the nearby macro sites on the surrounding areas around the macro sites to give them a little bit more capacity.
And may I ask you, you mentioned high traffic flow, so of course, this is all incorporating or assuming all the calls, including illegal calls in cars.
It's data usage.
All right.
It's data usage. And let me tell you, there are many legal ways to use your data in your car. I was using my navigator to avoid the high-traffic areas my entire way from Tacoma up here today. But yes, there is actually quite a lot of data usage happening in cars that is not on phones, but also a lot that's happening on wireless communications facilities in cars as well.
And you think 61st in particular is probably, by traffic volume, you mean automobile volume or telephone call?
Yeah, well, it's cellphone volume, but, but my guess would be that it's because it's a high-traffic corridor.
It is a high-traffic corridor, yeah. Okay.
You know, I know for myself, yeah, I was streaming my podcasts while navigating on two different devices while driving, all perfectly legally without being on the phone today. So the way that we use devices is just fundamentally different than it was five, 10 years ago.
Councilmember Curtis.
Do you ever see a day where we can get rid of the tall towers and have just gobs and gobs of these little ones?
Unfortunately, no. The macro sites are going to continue to be the backbone of our coverage. They are, for the most part, well, many of them, a high percentage of them, are backed up by battery and generator, and that makes them a real asset in the event of any kind of natural disaster or emergency. But also, we don't foresee this need, this growth in mobile data use dropping off anytime soon. And so we're really going to need every tool we can get to keep up with the demand that we're projecting.
Councilmember Shrebnik.
Just a quick comment. I had the same question as Joe, which has been answered, but I was on the planning commission that helped kind of craft the policy. And so I'm just really appreciative of you coming and working on this issue and any strategies that can help us not build more tall facilities that are separate and yet increase capacity, which this allows us to do. And I hope it's the first in a series that does get to other parts of our city because I think there probably are capacity issues in other areas as well, although I live right off 61st, so I'm thrilled.
There are other projects certainly that are on the drawing board for Kenmore. This was ranked as the most important right now. And the franchise will cover the subsequent projects as well.
So Mrs. Allen, I appreciate your involvement in this and your testimony before us when we were approving this ordinance, but I always thought this was in preparation for 5G. Is this a totally different thing now?
No, this is, this is, right now, we have a 4G capacity problem. 5G is coming. That equipment is being designed. I'm going to actually hand this off to Leela because she's on the ground with 5G right now. But the solution that we're proposing for Kenmore right now is to increase our existing 4G LTE capacity. But the infrastructure for this, the small cell-type infrastructure, will also host 5G when that's available.
And so is your equipment going to have to be replaced? I guess this question's going for 5G.
So this equipment is 4G LTE equipment. With 5G, Verizon has announced its first limited commercial launches happening this year. Sacramento? Yeah, Sacramento is the first one. We are still really in the infancy of the actual radio equipment technology for 5G. So at this point, our radio frequency engineers are working on their first project designs, and they're pushing our product development folks on making sure that we get some good products developed that we can deploy. What we do know about 5G and what it's likely to deploy like is that the equipment's going to be about the same size and form factor as our current 4G LTE small cell deployments. It'll likely be additive, so it'd be likely be a modification project to come back and add a 5G antenna and radio to a 4G installation utilizing fiber that's there, preferably. But each one's going to have to be a uniquely tailored project, and what they're going to look like is going to depend a lot on how the technology evolves over the next few years. But certainly, the franchise agreement, the code you've enacted, and deployments of 4G small cells are going to facilitate deployment of future 5G projects.
So I'm a little leery of Verizon and some of the things that they've said to us in the past. Verizon came in with FiOS, promised to do the whole city. They did half the city and then they bailed out. So we have half the city with FiOS and half without. So now you're coming in with small cell technology, you're putting it in half the city. What assurances do we have that the city's going to get covered and you're not going to bail out again?
So Verizon Wireless, our goal is to make sure that our customers can use their devices wherever and whenever they want to use their devices. And that is frankly the expectation of the wireless consumer now. So when it comes to specific technology deployments, we will not have small cells throughout the entire city, and that, I don't think that will ever be a reality based on what we know today because we have macro sites in certain places, and those provide adequate coverage and capacity. But we strive constantly to improve the capacity of our network and to have the most reliable network. And we continue to hold to that commitment.
And I think the FiOS rollout was a different company.
It was Verizon Wireline.
It was Verizon Wireline.
Yeah.
So they are separate.
They sold their wire line and kept the wireless side, so.
Right. So new folks in charge, Mayor.
So any other, any other questions? Nope, this is informational only, so thank you.
Thank you.
Back next week for the ordinance approval.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so very much. And by the way, you got a really good deal with Becky Range. Your gain is Redmond's loss. She did a great job for the city of Redmond for many years.
Yeah, I've talked with John. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, all right, next item on the agenda is report of the 2018 legislative session and Kenmore's legislative agenda, Ms. Housley. Shelley and, uh, Helder and, uh, Brianna Murray from Gordon Thomas Honeywell.
Hello, Mayor and Council. As you heard earlier this evening, uh, the state legislature finished its work on time, a short session. And, um, there's a lot of progress and, uh, some really good news for the city of Kenmore. And, uh, with me tonight are Brianna Taylor and Taylor Mur-Murray. Yes, um, and Shelley Helder, uh, who are with Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Uh, the firm has represented the city of Kenmore at, in Olympia for several years. And they have done their usual outstanding job in, in, uh, working through our legislative agenda, uh, for, for this session. So I am going to turn the presentation over to them.
Wonderful. Thank you, Nancy, um, for that introduction. And given how much information you have gotten this evening, um, on legislative activities, both from your legislators being here and also from the presentations that preceded us, both focused on items that the legislature tackled this session, um, we're going to try and be as brief as possible. Um, I, I think and I hope that you all have been reading our weekly reports as we send them out and have been following along. And so now that the legislative session has concluded, we're here to provide you verbally just with that comprehensive overview of what has just happened. Um, so I'm going to start with an overview and then I'll turn it over to Shelley to talk about some of the specific priorities that you all worked on and then I'll do the, uh, the wrap-up. So first, some of this will be a repeat from what you heard earlier this evening, but to provide an overview, we just completed a short 60-day session. It was the second year of the two-year legislative biennium. The legislature finished on time, which Shelley and I are very happy about. The legislature focused first and foremost on finishing work that failed to get done during the 2017 legislative session, uh, primarily on passing a 1719 capital budget and passing legislation responding to the Hearst Water Rights decision. Both of those items had action taken on them during the first weeks of the legislative session, which then allowed the legislature to transition and focus on adopting supplemental budgets, a supplemental operating budget, supplemental capital budget, and supplemental transportation budget. All three of those supplemental budgets were adopted again on time and prior to the conclusion of the legislative session. Uh, the Democrats were in majority this year in both the House and Senate for the first time since 2013. With that shift in the political dynamic, there was a lot of energy by the Democratic Party coming into the 2018 session. Uh, there was a record number of bills introduced, 2,388. That's more than has been introduced in a previous, previous long sessions. Um, credit that, that record number of bills being introduced to that very ambitious Democratic Party, uh, agenda as they, uh, had power for the first time in a number of years. Um, and, um, a lot of things got done, I think, in part because of that energy that, that they had. Um, I just, a, a couple highlights particularly on the supplemental budgets. Um, as you heard earlier tonight, the 2018 supplemental operating budget made a significant investment in K through 12 education. Nine hundred and thirty-five million dollars was allocated, uh, to the K through 12 education program. Um, as, also as part of the operating budget, a 30 cent per 1,000 assessed valuation property tax decrease was imposed, but it's a one-time decrease and it, it isn't in place until 2019. Um, and both of those were accomplished with no new taxes. They were accomplished through, uh, taking ex, that excess revenue. There was about 1.2 billion dollars over the four-year budget outlook. That was new forecasted revenue that came in because of the state's growing economy. Um, so they accomplished those two objectives with the new, uh, new revenue, um, and, and did not raise any taxes, although they did consider a car, a capital gains tax and a carbon tax, um, the carbon tax of which, uh, in particular in the Senate got a lot of attention. The supplemental capital budget invested about $200 million throughout the state in bricks and mortar construction. And then the supplemental transportation budget in large part continued implementing the Connecting Washington package that was, uh, approved in 2015 along with the gas tax. Um, so pretty minor changes in both of those budgets from a broad level, but it's Shelley's going to go into, um, really significant investments for the city of Kenmore. So that's a high-level overview of the three, three main budget and three main budget items and what the legislature did this session. And I'll turn it over to Shelley to talk to the priorities.
Yes, thank you. So as you all know, the city adopts legislative agenda every two years. And in the odd number year after the long session, the, uh, city adopts an amendment to that agenda, um, to take care of items that have already been addressed by the legislature. So this session, we were working on the 1719 legislative agenda for the city as you amended it heading into the 2018 session. In addition to your legislative agenda, you have policy statements, which are, uh, policies that the city supports, either, uh, either supports, opposes, or chooses to monitor. So I'm just going to run through really quick what those priorities were and kind of where we stand at the end of this legislative biennium. Um, the first was a request for funding for the 522 crossing. Um, as you all know, we requested $1 million. That, um, the final funding level was $500,000 for preliminary project development. And as, um, our, our delegation mentioned earlier this evening, they are eager to see the results of that and to continue working with the city and, uh, potentially also Lake Forest Park as they consider, um, crossings over 522 as well. So, um, great progress this session, um, for a, a legislative request in the transportation budget, um, in a supplemental year, a million dollars was, was a really heavy lift for our delegation. And they, um, they came forward with what was possible, and that was that $500,000 amount.
And just some, some additional context as we look toward the 2019 legislative session. In the 2019 biennium, transportation funding is going to become even more scarce. So as we look at next steps on this project and where we go from here, I want to share with you that that's the context with which we will be operating in. They're very committed to delivering that 16-year package of projects, and there is not a lot of wiggle room within that schedule, particularly within the 1921 biennium to add in new investments.
Um, moving on, as Brianna mentioned, the 1719 capital, uh, budget included several items for the city, and they've been mentioned previously, but I'll just list them because I think it's significant for you all to recall the, um, the amount of time and effort that has been devoted to some of these projects. So the Kenmore Public Boathouse, this is a request that we've been working on since 2015. Um, and with the coordination of the delegation as well as the, um, community support through the North Shore School District and the George Pocock Growing Foundation, this item finally got across the finish line, um, with the adoption of the biennial budget. Um, the improvements that were allocated for Morelands Park, this is something that came about really as a result of our delegation's, um, outlook or keeping an eye out for the district and looking for opportunities, came to us and said, you know, there's potential for some more capital funding. What would, what would the city of Kenmore need? And, and that's really how the Morelands Park funding came about. And I'll note that that request started just last year and already the funding is going to be available for the city. So, um, really it's, um, just ringing true what the delegation said earlier this evening, that they work together, uh, for the benefit of everyone in the district. Morelands Park is a really great example of that. Um, just to provide some context, other districts, other cities take many, many years to get projects funded in the capital budget. And, um, so have a project funded this soon after is, is significant. And then was also, also mentioned earlier this evening, the city is receiving 1.5 million dollars from the Public Works Assistance Account as a result of that project, um, or that, uh, account being funded by the capital budget. $750,000 for improvements at, uh, St. Ed's Ballfields. Um, in all, 1.25 million dollars in grants and 1.5 million dollars in loans. So really significant, uh, investments in the city as a result of, uh, the state's work. And then the, the last thing I'll mention is the Aquatic Lands Enhancement Account. In the 1719 biennial budget, the, uh, funding level for this grant project through the Recreation and Conservation Office was funded at 1 million, which left several projects unfunded. A project in Kenmore, the Rhododendron Park float and boardwalk was one of them. Um, and really as a result of Senator Fox's leadership, the ALIA grant program became, was funded to the level that, um, Kenmore's project would receive funding. So that's an additional $400,000 that'll be coming, um, the city's way.
And, and I'll just note that while he's, you know, lead on the capital budget for the Senate Democrat Party, this, this investment into the ALIA account was a really heavy lift because of the share costs and the, um, the amount with which he would have to negotiate with the other side of the aisle. So I, you know, it's 400,000 for Rhododendron Park float and boardwalk, but it's also a significant investment into a program that has long been underfunded and was a, a huge, uh, win for our senator and is something that really encourage you to extend that grand thanks to him as you guys did this evening.
Moving on to items that are included in the policy statements, one of the items that you all support is, um, encouragement of the state to develop product stewardship programs. And one of the programs that's been worked on for several years is a drug take-back system for statewide. King County has had a system, um, in place. Other counties were preparing to implement systems. And this year, uh, the state finally adopted a statewide program. It was heavily negotiated legislation, um, and ultimately made it across the finish line. It is, um, scheduled to preempt local health district programs 12 months after implementation. Um, so we'll see the, a lot of coordination between existing county programs as, um, the state program comes online. Another bill that we supported on your behalf as a result of your state policy statements, um, was a bill regarding, um, preventing human trafficking and kind of the, uh, real oversimplified synopsis of the bill is that it would have given, um, law enforcement officers, uh, it would have expanded their warrantless arrest statute to include, um, individuals who they believe to be promoting prostitution and human trafficking. The bill passed the House, ended up dying in the Senate. I would anticipate, uh, additional legislation like this to come forward, um, in the future. So we will continue to support that and, um, and bills like it that are in line with the statements that you guys have adopted. Um, one of the other items that you all monitor and support is, um, legislation in support of affordable housing. And there were several, several bills introduced this session. I'm just going to touch on a few of them. Of note, one was House Bill 1570. This is a bill that increases the document recording fee, um, from $40 to $62. There, there was legislation that passed in 2017 that extended the sunset on the document recording fee, um, to 2023. The legislation that just passed this session removed that sunset and increased it to $62. Of that $62, $10 will remain with the counties and the remaining amount will be distributed according to a, um, statutory formula. Another, um, bill that was, uh, that did pass the session or did pass the legislature this session, um, is House Bill 2538. It's regarding impact fee deferrals for low-income housing. Um, as originally introduced, it was a little bit more expansive and we did, um, sign in support, um, as, signed the city in support as it went through the process. And its final version, as it passed, um, essentially it excludes impact fees, uh, for homeless shelters. That was a little bit of a gray area prior to this legislation and this clarified that. Um, and then the last bill that I'll mention related to affordable housing did not pass this legisla, this session, but we do anticipate it will be back, um, next session, and that's House Bill 2437. It would have provided a credit against the state sales tax for affordable housing investments. That would have been, um, done through the counties. But within King County, there was language that would have required distributed, um, investment throughout the county.
If I'll just add one thing on affordable housing, the, the discussion on affordable housing in Olympia has really looked at, at two different things. One is the homeless, uh, services that are provided in order to help individuals get access to affordable housing. What wraparound services do those individuals need to identify and find themselves in affordable housing and to then continue to move on with their lives? The other conversation is, once you have those services in place, how do you ensure that there is adequate affordable housing supply available to those individuals? What the legislature did this session by increasing the document recording fee checked off the box of making sure there's enough funding for the homelessness services, but really didn't make significant headway in terms of addressing the supply of affordable housing. House Bill 2437 would have done that and would have really provided the comprehensive step forward to addressing both facets of the affordable housing discussion, but unfortunately it didn't pass during the final stage of the legislative process. So I think what you'll see going into 2019 is a focus and an emphasis on finding a solution to, to that component of the problem that continues to remain unanswered.
And so I mentioned you have your legislative agenda, you have your policy statements, and then you have bills that come about that would impact the city, um, either for the good or for the bad. And one of the bills that came up this session is, um, House Bill 2948 regarding, um, cities' population threshold for state routes as they go through cities. So, um, this is a bill that Mayor Baker came down to Olympia and sat in the Transportation Committee for several hours in order to testify. Um, and this bill, i- it did pass the legislature, which is great news. And its final version, as it passed, the, um, population threshold used to be at 25,000. Now it is going to be bumped up to, um, 27,500, 27,500. And then every five years thereafter bumped up an additional 2,500. So until it reaches the max of 35,000. Um, this is significant for Kenmore as well as several other cities around the state. Um, and really Kenmore, um, coming forward and weighing in on legislation like this is significant because it, it raises awareness that, uh, Kenmore is involved and is, um, tracking issues in Olympia and legislators that, we, we have our delegation here who knows, knows us and knows our issues very well, but it's weighing in on issues like this that really raises awareness for Kenmore across the state with, um, other members in the legislature. So kudos to you, Mayor.
Um, there are hundreds of different bills that are introduced in the legislative session that have an impact on city business throughout session. Um, Shelley and I flag a number of those for city staff and I, I just have to give a huge thanks to Nancy and to Rob and the many others that we've interacted with throughout the legislative session. They've been very good about getting us quick responses when we need them. And particularly in a 60-day session, it all moves very quickly and we need to be able to respond very quickly. Um, so, so thank you for the ability to do that and to weigh in on all of those bills. Um, I think we've kind of scratched the surface in covering the items that are in your legislative priorities in the policy manual. I do want to share with you all that from a broad city perspective, from the Association of Washington City's perspective, um, they, uh, issued their end-of-session report, um, and quoting from it, they say cities come out strong in the 2018 session. The things that they point to in eval, in providing that evaluation is that all state shared revenues were protected. There was an increase in marijuana revenue for jurisdictions that allow marijuana retail sales. There are two additional classes funded at the Basic Law Enforcement Academy to help make sure that when you hire new law enforcement officers, they, they're able to get quickly trained. Um, they also highlighted passage of legislation establishing a statewide tourism marketing authority, as well as legislation providing you all with new tools around abandoned homes and the defeat of legislation that would have preempted your authority around small cell network facilities. So there, as I said, there are a lot of issues from AWC's perspective as well as from our perspective. The 2018 session was a successful one. We are now going to begin to pivot and turn our attention to the 2019 session. There are two items on your legislative agenda that we think will really carry over into that 2019 session, um, that really, we've made our legislators aware of them, but we haven't figured out what the legislative ask is that's going to get across the full, uh, the finish line. And that's what tools could be provided, what economic development tools could be provided to help the Lake Point site development, as well as what can the legislature do to give the city more local control around regulating asphalt plans? Um, so we anticipate more action on those as well as, um, hearing about your next round of capital and transportation funding investments. We will be focused on looking at, uh, the elections that are, uh, going to be taking place. The entire House as well as half the Senate are up for reelection in November of 2018. Um, the, in May, we're going to, uh, have filing week and we'll know exactly who is running against who, but we've al, already had a number of legislators announce that they won't be seeking reelection. So we know the 2019 legislature will look very different. So we know that 2019 legislature will look very different than our current legislature, and will have a lot of new faces and potentially a different political dynamic. So we look forward to working with you all, as well as with city staff, in moving forward, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Actually, yes.
Assuming somebody else probably had something, but I have a question. Well, first, thank you for your update, and that was, that was good. It was thorough, but it didn't put us to sleep. It was absolutely perfect. And so I thank you for that. On the House Bill 2538, this has to do with the deferral on the impact fees for the housing shelters. My question is, is there any, and I'm not exactly familiar with all the details of that bill, but this looks like it's just for emergency shelters, and it's hard for me to believe that that would not even be a logical place to look to defer impact fees. But what I'm wondering is, is there a tool, or, excuse me, do we have access as a city to use any kind of impact fee deferral if we know that a particular project is going to be a significant, address significant affordability thresholds? Does that exist at all now?
So under, wrong, but in the wrong way. Under existing law, you're allowed to provide an impact fee exemption for affordable housing up to 80%. If you want to provide an exemption of up to 100%, you as a city need to backfill the impact fee revenue on the difference between the 80 to 100%.
Okay, that's what that was referring to.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand on that. Okay, thank you. And then the only other question I wanted to ask you on the Mobile Home Park Assistance Funding Bill that, that was the 1884, and it died. I'm just curious if you anticipate any revisions to that or changes, or if you see any, what kind of you anticipate, having seen it go through the process this year, what would you anticipate next year?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to speak to it, but do you want? I'll just say, and then if you have anything to add, I would say I do anticipate that to come back. That bill made it all the way through the House and died in the final stages in the Senate, so I do think that there's interest in passing legislation along those lines.
The one caveat I would give to that is this bill has been introduced for a number of years, and with the Democrat Party controlling both chambers, it experienced significant movement this year unlike all the other previous years. So if we have another political shift where we don't see Democrats in control of both chambers, that might make the path forward for this bill very challenging.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd like to make a comment too.
Well, let's see. Okay.
Well, I want to thank these two wonderful representatives who, you know, whenever we pick up the phone and call them, they're there. They may be in the car or something like that, but they've just been extremely responsive, and they just really know their stuff. We're very fortunate to be working with both of them. I wanted to say also that Brianna mentioned that there will be some new faces in Olympia next session. And I wanted to, in case you hadn't heard, a couple of state representatives who we have worked with very, very closely over the years will not be running for reelection. Representative Ruth Cagney is one, she used to represent this area, and Representative Judy Cliburn, who's longtime chair of the Transportation Committee, is not going to be returning. So it'll be a different look, but thank you so much for your great work.
The manager.
Ditto Nancy's comments about Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Shelley and Brianna have done an outstanding job for us, and they've delivered great results. We're very happy to have them.
It's our pleasure, thank you.
It's been really fun working with them this past session. They're very smart, and they've got things just down. They truly know what they're doing. And I'll get a phone call, well, can you be here tomorrow? You know, we need you to hear, whatever. They're just really on top of stuff, and I think we're very, very fortunate. We pay the money, but we're very fortunate to have them.
Not as much as you get.
We're very fortunate to have them, so anyway, thank you guys very much. Thank you. Staff report.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. There was one other thing that I wanted to mention. Brianna and Shelley talked about staff, city staff, being responsive when questions came up about legislation. I really need to recognize Lori Anderson from our Community Development Department, who worked on the small cell.
Yes.
And made, I think, a really important contribution.
Yes, yeah, much appreciated.
We know we've got great staff. All right, staff report.
Yeah, just one thing, Your Honor. Camp Unity is proposing to do a homeless camp at the Northlake Community Church. At your next council meeting, you're going to have a hearing on a temporary use permit that they're going to be seeking for that purpose. Also, I want to give you a heads up that they're also going to be having a community meeting this Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Northlake Community Church, and they're inviting the neighborhood to come to that as well.
And they've invited the council to be there too. Councilmember reports and comments. And, you know, I have been really, really negligent here at the past couple of meetings, and I'm going to rectify that tonight by starting to make sure that I don't forget him. Deputy Mayor.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Just a reminder, there's coffee with council this Saturday. This is the first time I've been able to make it work with my schedule. I'm excited.
Okay, so let me see. How many do we have? Because we had people send, we had three last count, and I don't know.
That's coming this time.
Huh?
I'm coming.
Yeah, and I'm coming, and Councilmember Marshall's coming, so that means you can't.
Or I could defer my place.
Or you can defer, yeah, if you want to go instead of Councilmember Marshall.
Seven minutes.
This is a first. I'd just like to say.
So, fine, then, Councilmember Shrubnik, we will see you there. All right, Councilmember Curtis.
So I went to ETP last Friday, and I took extensive notes and then forgot them at home. So we're going to get the short report from my memory. There were two major presentations. One was on the Growth Management Act, so that's been updated. And it gave a great historical perspective, how we got here and what the process has been, how it's actually updated. And there's a lot more steps than I thought. Before, my impression, in the 10 years I've been on council, it's like, somebody says you got to do this, and then you do it. And in fact, it's a much more collaborative and interactive process than I thought. It takes about a year, so information comes, and it goes back, and it goes around in circles, and somebody else looks at it. And there's a lot of modeling to say, where are the extra 1.8 million people going to end up? We're going to come to Puget Sound between now and 2050. So I was really excited to have a different perspective of how that plan is developed. And I think we are ready as a city to take growth and make it appropriate and still protect our single-family neighborhoods. The second topic was transportation infrastructure, and they did some pretty fancy modeling on what if we don't change anything? This is bus rapid transit particularly. And so it's metro, public transportation, not just roads in general. But one is don't change anything, one is increase frequency of the buses, and one is have more locations in each city. And then they surveyed each quadrant of the Puget Sound, and they basically got a lot of information to say, what do people actually want? Of those, of different factors, what's the most important? And it turns out, it was frequency. Have that bus come really often. That's what people want. And then how to solve the first mile, last mile, and all those other issues are separate issues, but people want those buses to run really often. And that was pretty much true in all four quadrants. All the stakeholders, that was the, one of the take-home messages. And that's it.
Councilmember Marshall.
I was happy to see that Arts of Kenmore had a great celebration in this building last Friday of the business community with some local businesses and celebrating Latino culture. We did have some dancing, and there were a great number of, at least enthused businesses that appeared. So it was a beginning, and look forward to what they're going to do in the future.
Councilmember Smith.
I have nothing to add, but I would like to ask if you have a presentation that they gave you on the Growth Management Act, if there's like a PowerPoint deck or something that you could forward to us? I would love to see what.
I think they were going to send it to us.
That would be great. It would be interesting to read or see.
If they were, I haven't seen it yet, so maybe you can jog their memory.
Okay, and if there isn't, that's fine. But I have nothing else to add, thank you.
So we had our first meeting April 4th here on the Sound Transit Local Elected Group. I happen to be a co-chair on that, and Deputy Mayor is sitting on it representing Kenmore. And citing on the garages is moving very quickly, and they want to have decisions here before the end of the year. And I'm trying to see if we can't perhaps, in addition or in with the garage, have some affordable housing constructed by Arch that will sort of, I'm hoping, make some of our costs go away with Lake Point, because we, this will be a substantial contribution. But then also, the ferry is alive and well, and I'm going to be going on a demo ride on Wednesday, because I'm bound and determined Kenmore is going to be part of the ferry route. So anyway.
Dramamine.
Huh?
Oh, nothing.
Dramamine, no.
Heckling here? No, no.
No, no dramamine necessary. So anyway, that's all I have at this time. And with that, if there's no further business to come before us, we are adjourned.